I'll not call or in this meeting the per county council. Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty of each and every citizen.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here in this meeting room tonight and ask that you be with this board and be with those that are presenting that we may take into considerations all citizens of the city of Honeyburg for these things we ask.
Amen.
First of all, you've all had a chance to look at the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second? Got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of claims. Do I hear a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
I'll second.
First and a second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm gonna, really, the first two things, we got a couple considerations here. The ordinance, do you have a copy of the ordinance here?
Yeah, I don't have, I got the, no, I don't have it. I've got a draft of a prior ordinance. Tom, do you have it?
I have it copied.
It's on a board pack, isn't it?
It's on board pack. It says board pack, but if you want to go ahead and go to the podium, just in case we have any questions regarding the fees. Chief Kramer? Any discussion from anybody? We have ordinance number 2024.
2024-18.
Before we have asked for a motion to approve, we have any questions regarding the fees?
This is only for digital media?
There's several things in there.
Yeah. So there was, there should have been a video recording portion added?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
And then just some adjustments to transferring photos through like email and then also putting photos on a storage device such as a USB or something like that. And then update to the incident report.
Mind me asking what led to adjusting the, just cost going up?
Yeah, so like the incident reports typically what we find is somebody doesn't come in to get a report that happened yesterday or two days ago, they're coming from two years ago. And we have to sit there and search and sift through 100 daily calls to figure out which one is theirs. And then we got to figure out, make sure it's the right one, who's involved, why they're getting it, stuff like that. So that just takes more and more time. And then as far as the video recordings, we never had anything for that. So we were just, you know, we were lucky enough that nobody ever requested anything until recently. And we couldn't even collect for it because we didn't have the ordinance. So that's what prompted this. And then just the transfer of electronic, it moved from photo prints. We don't have anybody come in and get printed photos ever. So we kind of took that out. And then as far as the photos on the USB, we just changed it from like CD and electronic. And then the price jump in that is just to cover the USB that we have to provide. And we're not taking a USB from somebody and putting it into our computer because it's not safe.
I was gonna ask you that on the video, the same scenario on the videos?
Yep. So we'll provide everything that goes into it. That way we don't put in a device that's been tampered with into one of our computers.
The video recording copy fee, that's fairly new for Indiana. And it primarily applies to the body cameras that the officers will wear, all the vehicle cameras.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of work associated with that. Chief Kramer can attest to that. They have to go in and delete any, any identity of any individual who's not involved in the recording incident. Or there's minors involved, or there's minors on the video, those have to be deleted.
Yeah, so if they aren't directly, if they're in the video, we'll keep them from being redacted. But anybody else that's in the video, they must be redacted. And that process is pretty exponential as far as downloading it and then getting, I don't know if you've ever seen like Evansville, how they do theirs. They always blur out whether it be a face or a person in general. You got to do all the tracking with all of them. I mean, it's, it's pretty extensive.
Yeah, he's also have to, anything that's a form, you have to take out a person's name or anything that might be a phone number or something that would lead to their identity.
Right. Yep. So all of that has to be looked at prior to releasing it and it has to be adjusted accordingly. And the only way we can keep people, keep from releasing people's identity is by using the program that comes with our body worn stuff, so.
Those fees stay within the department to be used for other training or recording devices that may need to be finished, so it doesn't go to the general.
Yeah.
Stays there.
Okay, so this is. So move to introduce it tonight?
Right, you could introduce it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 2024.
18.
18? Yes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to suspend.
Accepted.
Suspend the rules, check first, and I'll make that motion.
You may, although the Board of Public Works has not met yet, so they haven't seen these increases. Typically, the Board of Public Works does make recommendations to the council. Chief Kramer wanted to get this expedited because obviously they want to receive compensation for the time they're putting into these fees. It would be okay to suspend the rules unless you feel like you might be stepping on the Board of Public Works' toes.
Let them meet.
And let them meet and approve the recommendation.
They meet next week.
Come back and approve it.
They meet next week, that's fine. If you're willing to wait, I am.
It's okay.
Without seconds to the die, I guess.
It'd be carried over to the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
All right, so carried over next meeting. And it is on agenda already for the Board of Public Works, 18, for the next Thursday's meeting. I'll go to the next presentation.
So more so just to get an idea of how you guys feel about it, but I've had an individual come forward wanting to give us a significant donation toward another K9 to provide another dual purpose K9 for the city. We met last week, discussed everything from the start to the finish of it. With that donation, we would also seek out the same grant that we got for Romeo. And in fact, we would request for more money if we do it the same way, just because we would be eligible to do that. Last time we got $6,750, or $6,750. So we would actually get a little bit more than that to kind of cut that cost back a little bit for that private donor. But they are willing to make that donation. More so trying to get an idea if you guys would be accepting of that.
We have in the budget to go line up for the K9 officer, right?
Yeah, there's, so that kind of covers their off duty kennel maintenance.
Right.
And then we have a K9 fund that people donate to, so.
So essentially, we could potentially, we could potentially have one on duty most of the time?
Yeah.
Right now?
So we would have one on every day of the week?
This person's off duty, then we have to call this person in?
Yeah.
If needed?
Yep, correct.
And I think they're on a pretty strict schedule, like if dogs eaten or something, like if it can't go, there are times whenever maybe.
Yeah, so there are times that they're down just because you don't want them to bloat. If they do bloat, you got to rush them to an ER and we'll have to foot that bill. So, and that's pretty expensive. Or they die, but.
Is there a way to, an easy way to, outside of unexpected vet bills and stuff, but is there a way to estimate the total cost of having a K9 unit or K9, an additional one? You know, like there's, isn't there an increase in the officer, officer's pay and the maintenance for the, for the actual dog and you have the vehicle costs?
Yeah, so as far as the officer's pay, historically speaking, it's maintained what they've been at. What Councilman Kissling alluded to, the K9 fund or the K9 wages, that's what the off duty pay is. Typically, you can set it whatever you agree to. We don't have an agreement right now with Jorge. That's something that I plan on sending to Phil to draft up. And that's something that I would like to draft up as well for the next K9 handler. But that would come out of that fund and there is enough in there to cover that for both, both guys.
And it is a sizable donation.
It is.
Could come early and order to outfit a vehicle.
Yeah.
Prior to the arrival.
So.
We wouldn't have that cost.
Yeah.
When I think just the offset of the overtime for the one unit or for the otherwise, if you only have one and then that officer has to come in, it seems like always having one on duty.
Yeah.
Basically getting, basically getting another officer.
Does the sheriff's, county have any?
The county has one K9. I couldn't tell you what kind of shift he works. Sometimes it's a split, sometimes it's days. It just, it varies. With this, we would look at putting, Jorge's already on a shift, and then we would look at putting the other K9 on the opposite rotation to where they're, unless the K9 handler themselves is on vacation, there would literally be a K9 on every single day. So.
You have previous experience with K9 as a K9?
Yeah.
As an officer?
Yeah.
What are the years of service of a typical K9 dog or at least dog?
Six, seven? Eight to 10, yeah, depending on, like a dual purpose, you're gonna probably get less. But if it's a single purpose, you know, jumping in and out of a vehicle, hips go out, you know, everybody gets old.
Speak for yourself.
Yeah, I'm getting there.
I mean, I know they have a retirement date, right?
Yeah, yeah, but it's, I think we had Esther for probably nine, nine years or so on the road. So that's a pretty good lifespan.
Yeah.
On the road. She's still living, thankfully.
How long between Esther and now, the new dog? Did we have a span without a dog?
Roughly two years.
Because I think if we had two dogs too, that would kind of eliminate that. They would be more tapered.
Wouldn't have so many, wouldn't have any gaps.
Yeah.
Is it a single purpose or dual purpose or does that have to be determined?
I would be interested in a dual purpose dog. Just because there's multiple uses for them, like the tracking, obviously you can track an individual, doesn't mean it's gonna bite or apprehend anybody on the other end. Similar to Jorge's dog, it's a tracking dog. We could muzzle it, track with him, doesn't necessarily mean he's gonna get a bite at the end. If it's a lost individual, we don't want him to bite, we're gonna throw a muzzle on him. Just because he's trained to bite and we don't want that liability and we don't want body parts missing at the end of it.
We appreciate that.
So.
Somebody's.
Yeah.
Lost your man.
So, we found him. But yeah, that's, I mean, that's, we're looking towards the end of the year to move forward with that. And then they're wanting to make a majority of the donation into next year. I'm assuming due to tax reasons. But other than that, I told, I told them that we'd be interested in purchasing the kennel ahead of time. That way we have the kennel, we have the vehicle ready to go. And whenever we register for the class, we can just go get the dog and proceed. That way it's kind of smooth.
Dogs readily available?
The kennel does, yeah.
I mean, they, they're working with them.
Yeah, constantly. And they'll like reserve it.
Vehicle level?
Yeah, we would use one of our existing vehicles.
Let's retrofit it.
Yeah, similar to what we did with Jorge's.
Is this already built into the budget numbers we're gonna see on Thursday?
No.
Are funds in the budget for this already or?
No, with knowing, so this came, this meeting came after me preparing those documents. But as far as the donation, it's gonna cover the vehicle, the training for the dog and all of the expenses going up to the training. The only thing that we would have to pay would be like if we called the person out after training. And maybe collar, equipment, stuff like that, minor things here or there, but all of the major expenses were thrown into that donation.
We had to put a few thousand dollars into the last dog.
Yeah.
We won't have to this time.
Right.
This is actually gonna be about $5,000 higher. I think it's around, well, we started with the last with Romeo.
Yeah, so it's probably, we're estimating about a $20,000 donation if we, if we're gonna put a number on it.
That's a nice donation.
So.
We start out with 15,700 or something like that with the last.
Yeah. So just more or less trying to get your guys' opinions on it, how we proceed from here, so.
Also, no objections?
No, I don't either.
Thank you.
We do have a K9 fund for receiving these kinds of donations or we have to create a special?
Yes, we have.
Do we have a name or is there not a name or do we have an amount?
I don't have an amount exactly yet, just because it's gonna be broken into, broken into two separate donations with trying to get that kennel in first. And then once we get it installed, then we'll register for classes and the dog. So, but we can get on a list for the training as soon as they issue out that list of when their trainings are. That way we can be number one as far as selecting our dog. Because they go by how early you register for each class. So if the training's in March, we can call in December and say, hey, we've got a guy, you know, coming.
Both of them, they should come the first of the year.
Yeah. And so.
So we don't need to create a fund, we have a place to take that, detect the money?
There is a K9.
Yeah.
Donation. And we also would track that.
Just, yeah.
Those, those costs.
Right. So.
So what's, we have, you have a definite amount and the council needs to accept that amount. Could be in two installments or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Get action for the council to accept.
Okay. And I'll work on, in the meantime, until we get that, I'll work on getting the pricing for the kennel and the equipment stuff that goes with the vehicle. And then also the training and the K9 itself. And then as well as the grant, because that'll help knock down that portion. That way he doesn't have to donate the full 20, it might be 19, it might be 18, something like that.
Make a motion to accept up to $20,000.
Do you do that?
Or? Any amount. I mean.
Why would you limit it?
Yeah, that's true. That'll find one out.
And I'm sure they would appreciate that too, but they're willing to make that donation because they see the need for it, so.
We need a motion to accept the donation at which time it comes, but.
Yeah.
We need to deny it or we need?
Yeah, then you could do it. Yeah. You need such a balance that, you know, if it's not sufficient and the department decides not to pursue it, we'd have to refund the donation, of course. It can only be used for K9 program.
So do you want to put a dollar amount or just make a motion to accept the K9 donation?
I guess you could, any amounts donated.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a first, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
You got two more?
Yes.
Motions here?
New hiring of promotion?
Yes, so we're looking at expanding our reserve officers to try to help us cover events, whether that be festivals, ball games, Herb's Fest, the, the stuff on Fourth Street here. They cover all of those for us and the city doesn't pay them. Most of the time, organizations that host us pay that fee for them. But the first one I would like to present to you guys is Adam Bauer. He's a retired sergeant from JPD with a little over 20 years of service with them. He's, he brings, he is a firearms instructor as well as a primary instructor and can teach, you know, basic things as well. We have a need for a firearms instructor still. We, you know, we don't have anybody currently other than another reserve. So it'd be nice to give us more availability to get onto the range and practice. And then he also was a K9 handler for several years at Jasper.
So our city ordinance says that reserve officers are appointed by the mayor, but with the consent and advice of the council. So when the chief is bringing this to the council tonight for your consent and approval, so America proceeds to choose its appointed.
And I haven't talked, I have spoken with Adam and I know Adam well and he's, I think he, I'd jump at a chance to bring him on as a reserve officer, frankly.
Do you have other names that you're gonna talk about?
I've got another one too, yeah.
Can we do both at the same time?
Yeah.
I think everybody probably knows Jamie.
Okay.
Rashi.
Yeah, Jamie Rashi. He's an auxiliary officer for us currently. Like to move him up to a reserve. He's been with us for almost six years. Next month will be six years. He's currently a jail officer for sheriff's department. And he's been proven to be an asset to us. He works many events, many ball games, festivals. Typically, one of the first to volunteer if he's off, so.
So we need a motion to approve?
We need a motion to approve both.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of two reserve officers.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So the next step would be for me to make an appointment of those two.
At the beginning, for the courtesy of.
Yeah.
We do ask around our Board of Public Works for next Thursday.
I do intend on advising them of it as well, so.
We won't do any appointments.
And this will bring us up to nine reserve officers, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work and also for your, I know many of you were involved last weekend.
Yeah.
Working security for the rip like Bron and that sort of thing. Things at 11:31, they're pretty much, the cars were out of town or headed, headed down 2:31 anyway. Went very smoothly after the event and ended after 11:00. We didn't have mass. I think there was maybe one small incident where somebody was asked to leave, two possibly. Somebody, somebody got a little, little mouthy, but there were no injuries, no threats of violence, nothing like that. It was a very clean event.
Yep.
Same with Friday night, so we appreciate the reserve officers that were there. In fact, Mr. Bauer was there Saturday night too and Friday night. Okay?
Thank you.
I have to stay unless you really want to. Superintendent John Root, poll. Council.
Start off with the gas department. Had four more services this month, seven applications ready to go. They do replace 65 meters this month with the new census meters. Now, a couple of crews got called up to A Street that they're reconstructing to lower a couple of gas services. They were steel. None of this stuff was put in and probably in the 50s. We recollect and tried to lower some of the steel service lines that cracked the coating where it was welded to the main. Started small leak. I say back in the 50s when it was welded, it was just, as long as it didn't leak, this is good. So there was no real regulations back then. So then when we uncovered some of the main steel main, you could tell where they probably tried to lower the main with the backhoe, but it just scraped along the main, they flat spotted it, which is not regulation anymore. So while the asphalt was all tore out of the road, we decided it's a good idea just to replace the main and all the surfaces with plastic since, like I say, we don't have to dig through the asphalt. So spent two weeks up there placing all the services, placing the main, getting it all tied in with all plastic now. We got records of everything. Before we did, no record, pressure test records or nothing. So we're all back in compliance. And then they did move to 17th Street. I think it's gonna be milled and repaved. No plug valve there, we had to dig down and replace because they're not cold anymore. We knew it was there, so we had to go down and, well, cut it out, weld it, weld it, weld a new one back in, ball valve. So we got that all done. And I think this week they're working on 17th now. They're deep patching it, no milled and paved it. And I did include the locator truck, the bids, three bids came in. As you can see, GE, or not GE, GM was the lowest at 33,146. Did include all the bolts, I'm gonna look them over. That's with the trade in of the 2004 truck. It's got over 275,000 miles on it and several items are going wrong with it. So I think they gave us like $1,300 trade in value. So I need, if everybody's okay with it, I need approval for the truck.
I have a question, one, I guess we get four wheel drive because that's all that's available in the Ford cab. I know it's.
Actually.
Too many to need anymore.
Actually, they got, it's a fleet truck, so actually they got one on the lot in Kansas right now, but they got it kind of tagged for us in case we do buy it. It's nothing fancy, it's all black, no chrome on it. I mean, it's a white truck, but it's got black trim.
And I assume this truck can hold all the equipment he needs?
Yeah. All the locating equipment and some emergency equipment on, he'll have room for. Plus it's a lot better on, gonna be a lot better on gas mileage. It's a lighter duty truck than what's being driven now. Probably double the gas mileage.
Do we need to make a motion to?
Yeah.
Get that approved then?
Yeah.
Need a motion for the GM, purchase of the GM vehicle through Ublard Sons?
Mm-hmm.
That's what we're looking for. And price is 33,146, I suppose we said.
I'll take the motion.
Got a first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Any other questions on the gas? Moving on to electric. We had a local company come in, we had three areas, residential areas that we decided to go ahead and bore. Had overhead lines that were next to some wooded areas, kind of small air, small areas, a couple of residents on each one. Like I said, in bad weather, it's hard to get trucks in there, poles are getting old. So we decided to go ahead and convert that to underground. And then the crews did replace 10 poles this month. A lot of them are old, need replacing. We had to do a lot of tree trimming just to get in to replace a couple of the poles. That's how overgrown it was. And once again, it's hard to get trucks in there in bad weather, so decided a good time to get in and replace them. The crews, they put, they installed the solar lights at the Northside Park this month. You will notice they're kind of dim if you look at them from a distance, but they do have motion detectors on them. So as you get closer to them, they'll brighten up, which will save, you know, it's not so bright if there's nobody there at night for the residence that lives in the area. And then they did work at the wastewater plant. We're doing some of the primary wiring for, we're beginning construction down there. So there's some work we had to do. We had to shut the plant down for a couple hours. Redo the primary wires, build a transformer setting for some temporary lift station. So we got that all done, ready for the next phase when I need to go down and hook up the temporary transformer. Very nice.
Good job.
We did have an outage Friday night. Our SCADA system worked very good. We all got it, all the crew members and myself, we got a text from our SCADA system that we did lose a circuit. Happened at 10:30. We did come in, we isolated the problem, got the circuit back up in an hour. A lot of the guys, they got it on their phone. Uh, a lot of the guys, they got it on their phones, so they called in, wanted to know if we needed help. See how we're gonna, we had a line down. The vehicle did hit one of our ductile iron poles we just set about six months ago. Pole didn't break, but the wire snapped, so, you know, the fix was a lot quicker. If we had to replace the pole and replace the wire too, so it, uh, was put to the test. So it worked out pretty good.
Good work. Thank you. It was personally affected by that and my tower was on very quickly, so thank you.
We have to, do they, assume they, we turn that into insurance for all the?
Uh, gotta get a report from the police.
What's fifteen dollars?
You gotta hurry before we get that one passed.
Do you need, do you need video?
Hopefully it's all covered by insurance.
Yeah, we'll get you that.
I do have a question on your used poles. Do you sell those or have opportunity to sell them or can we sell them?
What's that?
The used poles that you can.
We can't sell them.
Can't?
Uh, we just.
Not even to the individual for a light pole?
We can get them away, but we can't sell them.
Liability?
You're, the liability or the treatment that's in them maybe?
Yeah.
Sell them?
You don't wanna. See, we get calls regularly for people wanting a light pole. I, I never tell them, never know where to tell them to go.
Yeah, they, you know, to come down, they load them and they're sales.
We used to use them for outdoor basketball, goals, goals.
Sometimes we have a lot of farmers need fence posts, they'll come and load them all up and take them.
Yeah, okay. I don't know where to tell them to go.
Yeah. They can just get ahold of us and we can show them where they're at.
Okay.
Any other questions on electric?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. John? Jerry? Austin?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, we'll jump into distribution work. Um, I included some pictures with your board pack. First item on the list was seven water meters for a building in town. Uh, the pictures I included kinda showed, um, a cellar opening. The basement where the seven meters were located and the shape of the basement and the lighting in the basement. Um, anytime, these are, this is an apartment complex and anytime we have to shut water off, whether it be for a mover, non-payment. Uh, there's no way to lock those meters out, other than removing the meter and the radio itself. Uh, we've been there, ain't we, John? Uh, you, uh, you go down there, you turn them off and next thing you know, somebody's turning them back on. There's no way, no, no valve to lock off. So to prevent, um, happening to continue to remove those meters and radios. Those meters and radios are programmed for a specific address, so if they would get mixed up and put in a different address, somebody'd be paying for somebody else's water use. So we took some time this month to move those seven meters outside of the building. And, uh, in that bottom right-hand corner, that's what you see there, those seven meter pits that are back in that blacktop. Uh, the curb line and the sidewalk have been poured back at this time. We were waiting on the street department to help us out with that. Um, other than that, we, uh, had a ditch line that comes off of our spillway by our solar array that has started washing out due to the rip rap falling into the ditch. So we went down there, we restacked quite a bit of it, um, and then we had to bring, uh, roughly twenty ton in to replace that as well, to fill those washouts in and keep that ditch from washing out further. The, uh, intersection at Second Street and Walnut, I know that was a hot topic for a while. That, uh, that had a four-inch water main in it that was supposed to be cut and capped in the mid-nineties. Uh, we found out when that water main blew that that was the four-inch that was not cut and capped in the mid-nineties. So, uh, we, uh, we had to order a couple of special parts. Uh, did take almost a month for those parts to get in so we could get back in there and fix that. Uh, but that is, that intersection has all been replaced with six-inch water main. Uh, we got the four-inch out of there. Seems to be a common practice that we've found that when water mains were replaced in the past, they laid up to the intersections and left all the four-inch in the intersections. Um, causes big issues with flow. We actually have a fire hydrant that's set there at the intersection that was an orange top. Um, it wouldn't flow over five hundred gallons a minute of water. We rebuilt this intersection with six-inch and we're over eleven hundred gallons per minute of water. So that'll also help and aid with our ISO audits and our insurance ratings. Uh, unfortunately, we don't know that that stuff's there until things like this happen. Um, while we were doing that work, we did have to shut off a few blocks of water. And when we went to turn the valve back on at Second Street and Geiger, which is a very old valve, uh, it is a four-inch valve. That block of water main will eventually be replaced and upsized to six-inch. But that valve, uh, the valves have snapped on it and failed, so we weren't able to open it back up. So the following morning, we dug that valve up and replaced the valve and a section of pipe. And then that brings us to the three valves that we repaired at Second Street and Cherry. We were locating the water main out for wastewater. Uh, when we did that, we found a couple of old valves that were buried under the rock that, um, they were for the old four-inch water main that used to run towards wastewater. Uh, but we were turning valves to see which valves went which direction. Um, while turning that valve, whenever the valves were built from factory, prior to two thousand and ten, they were built with zinc bolts. Uh, those bolts on the bonnet that holds the two pieces of valve together rot off. Uh, when we closed that valve and shut it down completely, the bolts popped, which caused the valve to leak. Um, so we dug that valve up and had to replace the O-ring and the bolts in it. While we were there, there was two other valves in that same vicinity. It was in the rock, it wasn't in the road. Uh, within five feet of each other, so we went ahead and dug those valves up and were able to replace those bolts one by one and doesn't have to disrupt service. So went ahead and took care of those valve bolts as well, so it's not a future problem in the same area. Um, we did have a water main break on East First Street on our sixteen-inch main between the city park and railroad tracks. Uh, no real cause for it that I can give, other than that main is just old. Uh, we fought problems with it for a long time. It's, they're, they're very few and far between on that main, but when they do happen, they're usually, um, pretty rough. This one was pretty straightforward. The guys got out there and had it put together within an hour after the locate was called in, so.
That's our supply from Patoka, right?
Yeah, yeah, that is our, our phase one supply from Patoka. That feeds our east tank and then also comes down to First Street, First and Cherry, up Cherry Street, and then, um, it cuts over. Oh, I don't know what little, there's a little cul-de-sac road there that cuts through up to Fourth Avenue and then ties into our south tank, so. Um, we, uh, also this month, we had a phone call from a resident that had some water in their backyard that they hadn't seen before. Uh, we went out and we checked some meters in that area. We didn't see any water usage on any meters, but, um, we, uh, we did dig a small hole in their yard and tried to capture some of that water. Uh, we went back out there and the hole actually didn't have any water in it to capture to see if it had any chlorine and fluoride in it. Um, but roughly two days later, uh, it's by Glenn Kissling's house, he reached out to me and said, there was water there again. So we went back out there and we still weren't able to capture any water, but we spent a few hours with our listening device out there. We found a service line leaking from the main to the meter on the city side of the meter. Um, so we replaced that whole copper service line with a poly service line. Uh, we kinda, we seen the same thing with it as we have been on the copper, the copper I brought you guys last time. It's, um, I, like I said, nobody can pinpoint to whether it's a soil issue or electrolysis or what the problem is. Um, the only thing that we do know is it's being corroded from the outside in, not the inside out, so. Um, other than that, we've, uh, we've been actively working on our lead and copper survey still. That deadline's coming up for that to be submitted, October sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, we're, uh, like I said, we're hopeful to not have any unknowns. We'd like to be able to have a hundred percent inventory of whether they are lead or they're not lead. Um, we're gonna be very close on that, so hopefully we don't have any issues and we can continue to work on that like we would like to. Um, with that, we've been doing a lot of GIS work. Uh, when we do that lead and copper survey, I'm sure you guys have probably seen excessive amount of blue paint on the roadways. Uh, it is water-based, it does come off in the rain after time. But, um, we locate those service lines and mains out in advance. That way we know when we bring the core drill out and the excavator, the hydro excavator out, we know where to drill. So while we're doing that, we're, um, doing all of our GIS work for our service lines and our meter pits. Uh, and then, uh, we currently, we just finished up this week. We had nine services on the east four hundred block of First Street between Main and Jackson that is on an old six-inch water main. Uh, in the last three years, we've had four water main leaks on that block of water main. There is a newer eight-inch water main that was installed there years ago. Um, why the services wasn't moved to that newer water main then, I do not know. But we have, um, moved those nine services and then we will end up in the intersection of Jackson and First Street to kill that six-inch water main before the wastewater project is finalized, before paving's done. So, um, other than that, that's all I have for distribution. And, uh, as far as our filter plant and our meeting system, they're, uh, operating as they should and, uh, we're still catching our leak alarms off our census system and notifying customers as we can.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Uh, city attorney Phil Schneider? City, uh, Clark Fraser, Tom Stipple?
I got reports. So I'm gonna give you. This is your budget stuff, but hard copy. It's also on your, uh, fire, your pack.
Thank you.
I think I gave you yours already.
Yep.
Uh, then there's the, uh, also some information here. The fire department came in after that was complete. So we actually be talking about this, this sheet.
Thank you.
I don't now have nothing. Just something I want to say before the council, I don't know what they do. Uh, you know, we have the red light and Bron this Saturday. I can't say enough for our police officer, our water department. Uh, we had everybody contributed in some way. Water department had some work to do on First Street that they, uh, got done. We also, our parks department, street department, electric department, everybody had some, uh, effort put into that, into the, uh, project. Uh, one thing that we had from the promoters that do these all over Midwest is that they found the city of Huntingburg to be the best city they've worked with. And they truly meant that. Uh, they complimented me and I said, well, I was just along for the ride. You know, we, uh, the, what was set forth, uh, the city of Huntingburg, part of me being in here is what allowed, uh, for that to be such a smooth operation. And we've had at least two, uh, requests for other types of events next year and maybe a large sporting event. Looking at, uh, we need run in conjunction with, uh, one of the other festivals, whatever. Getting a lot of press out of it and, uh, we need to take advantage of it, but it's, uh, if you knew the, the organization behind it and, uh, even our safety department with Andrea spent a lot of time out the stadium ensuring that, uh, we passed our, uh, state fire marshals inspection and everything else, so.
Are they interested in coming back?
What's that?
Are they coming back?
Yes, we've already said yes. We got a verbal yes, and then they're looking at a three-day event next year. Uh, start on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, uh, and bigger band than, it won't, bigger, bigger groups than, than what they had this year.
They had pretty good groups. I won't conflict with our fourth Friday then, I hope.
I think it might be in conjunction with.
They'll pay for the fourth Fridays.
Okay.
Act, that'll be one of the nights. As they did this year, the nice thing that, uh, Mr. Baldwin that was up here Friday night sung his number one song for the first time live, that hit number one on Friday and that caught a lot of press, actually off of his social media that he committed to Huntingburg, so that was, Huntingburg's being mentioned. I will say that I've mentioned, uh, when I talked to some of the crews that were coming up, they recruited people from Evansville and Owensboro to come up here and I met some of the first people in. You know, eighty percent of the people I spoke to in that first hour had never been to Huntingburg.
Wow.
It's, uh, none of the bartenders at any of the little shuttles had ever been to Huntingburg. They, they recruited them out of Owensboro and Evansville to come up here and work that day, so. Uh, it, uh, yeah, so we, we have got a lot of press out of this and I think it continually will build, so appreciate the work that everybody did.
It was, it was smooth from what I saw. I saw just little to no problems of parking or the vehicles coming and going and.
Yeah, we, we had a lot of talks during the event, uh, taking a lot of notes. I think we come up with about twenty-five or thirty things that we could improve on. I probably note, most people didn't notice.
Yeah.
Uh, but they'll be, uh, meeting September eleventh, kinda hash some of those things out. So thanks, everybody. So it's a great event. Any council items? Uh, any citizen items? We have one citizen out here. Nothing for you, Dan? Thank you. Uh, well, then I need a motion to adjourn.
I would like to thank the officers for taking on the K nine responsibility. Thank you. Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. We got a first and a second. Any of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, thank you. Motion carries. Thanks, man. I didn't need to do that.
I'll lay back. I'll bet you got that back.